All right, it's seven o'clock and I'd like to call this meeting to order. All right, and actually before I start the official meeting, I want to say that a couple of weeks ago, we had a discussion about about some people that were trashing property and were were parking places that they shouldn't be and I made a comment that I thought was pretty innocuous because I was just saying that, you know, people that are here, you know, we take pride in what we do, but sometimes people from other places don't, but I made the mistake and I said people from away. And that term clearly takes a lot of people off. I don't blame them because I'm from away. And so I wanted to publicly say that even though I was not talking about anybody on this island, I would never ever say anybody on this island is from away. Because that's me, that's me. And actually, the great majority of us are from away. I was trying to talk about people from other towns who might not care as much about it as our town does. So I wanted to publicly apologize and say if you were offended by the fact that I said that, I certainly wasn't talking about you. And I probably will continue, since this is a live recording, probably will continue to stick my foot in my mouth. As I'm sure you two will as well. That's one of the joys of having live recordings and so I just wanted to put that out there for all of you. So with that, we'll get started for the real meeting and I'm going to actually postpone the warrants for a couple of minutes only because we had warrants for two weeks and I forgot to get the numbers. There's the second thing I screwed up on this this week already. So we're going to start with the minutes and I'd just like to make a motion that we accept the minutes for August 28th, select board meeting. And actually, the 9/1/23 Board of Assessors meeting that we had Friday a week ago. So do I have a second for that?
Second?
And all in favor?
All right.
All right, all right. We'll sign that later and get that out. Um, third thing, and there's hopefully everybody's got an agenda. The third item that we had was opening a bid. We actually had bids on the Bay Shore Road ditching and culvert replacement and we had one bid. And I'm going to open it now. And the winner is all right. It is from SR Griffin Construction Incorporated. The amount is $37,000. So we have had a discussion among ourselves that if we only have one bid, that if everybody agrees, we can make a decision on it tonight rather than waiting week. So I will turn to my, yes, yes.
Can you table, I'd appreciate it if you would table that till Wednesday.
Okay, that would be absolutely perfect because anybody can ask that we do that. That would be perfect. Thank you. That actually covers our
Okay, just again, because of the public issue, the just reminder that what this was for is the
Bay Shore Road.
For the culverts to be replaced on Bay Shore Road.
Yep.
3,900 feet of ditching on Bay Shore Road as well. And that's what's the work associated with the area of the project.
Yep, even though it's not on.
It's a substantial amount of work for a road that's needed a lot of attention.
Yes, it's been asking for a lot of attention. Yeah. All right, so we will table that. Yes, sir.
When we talk about the hurricanes, that's a road of concern. And this is a money well spent, but I think we should table it right down till Wednesday. Till next, you know, you can make your decision next week.
Yep.
But yeah, that's why I asked about the hurricanes because I am concerned about Bay Shore Road and other areas in town.
Good point. If I'm going to do this to hold. All right. Uh, next on our agenda is the discussion of the management of the old town dump properties. So I'd like to introduce Steve and Mary Ellen and who wants to lead it and we actually still have some of your pictures up here when you were with Ransom.
I think we last met in January. I think when Steve came up and talked about what some next steps will be. So I think he might have presented maybe an informal proposal and then you followed up with that. So I think he sent to you a more of an updated description of the tasks that are involved, that are proposed to be involved and how the funding will come from the EPS.
Yeah, yeah, we had received that several months ago. Yeah, and I have it handy. You know that name?
Well, he didn't just update it because his company has changed.
I can explain a little bit. But you're right in the sense that my name's Steve Dyer.
Yeah, and Steve, I'd like for you to make sure that you talk close to here so that Charlotte and Peter can hear.
So my name's Steve Dyer. I'm with a company CDMR Engineers. And Aaron Martin behind me is a geologist. I'm an engineer. We used to be with Ransom Consulting, which is the pretty pictures up there. The logo in the upper right-hand corner and both Aaron and I left the firm and a few other engineers and geologists that are now at CDMR. We had done the investigation work on the old town dump through Mary Ellen's brownfield program back at the end of last end of 2022. It was like in July, August and September time period. And like she said, in January, we came and we presented the results basically of that investigation and spent probably more time than you guys wanted to talk about on it, 15 to half hour talking about the results and everything. And sort of at the end of it, we presented what's the next steps. And because PFAS, which is an emerging contaminant that everybody reads about in the paper and everything was detected in that one of the monitoring wells there at a level higher than the standard that the state of Maine is set for PFAS. We, the next steps would be to make sure and to look at whether that has any potential to impact any neighboring wells or anything like that. And so we developed a scope of work at that point. The DEP has a program that's a landfill slash PFAS program where they'll reimburse the community the expenses to do that sampling and everything like that. Aaron and I met with the DEP on sort of on your behalf, kind of came up with a scope of work that they were acceptable with from a, you know, a verbal perspective, like we went back and forth. Prepare a proposal that we submitted to you. It never, nothing really came about. We switched companies. Now we're at the new company, so we reissued the proposal from our new company. And the information basically stays the same. The cost stayed the same. Everything sort of stayed the same. And the next step to that proposal would be re-sampling the wells that are on the property and then sampling the two adjacent well owners' wells, two adjacent properties. And and moving forward with that and it would be reimbursed by the DEP.
Totally reimbursed by the DEP or I think I remember 75% was that, was it totally?
I think it's fully. It's fully.
Yeah, okay.
That actually sounds good.
Our recommendation was not fully, but fully sounds good.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you hear it was talked when we were here earlier about it being a part of a like a landfill remediation project, which those costs are 75% reimbursable. But since this is funded through their uncontrolled sites that are tied to their landfill program, they're fully reimbursing communities. We just did this. I just did this for the kind of standard right before I left.
It's important to get it under the right topic then. Yeah. So that's because that was like a part of our duty, actually. We did ask the land, the butters back after your presentation and they were basically fine. We probably can do that again.
Yeah.
I just talked to one who was very interested in that.
Right, right. So there's a form that the DEP, like a formal form that would need to get submitted to go along to be part of the program.
And it's just some, and there's also just some email communication between you folks here at the town and with the DEP staff to confirm the scope and the costs. And that's basically if there's any changes to that, it gets communicated during that process, but it's just a very simple email communication also.
So what the very next step would be, if you guys are okay with the scope we proposed, that dialogue would start, we would submit this proposal to them and get a formal reply back that they're, they would be reimbursing you for the full. And sometimes they might expand it. I don't think that would be the case because we had a pretty in-depth conversation with them, but there's been other projects that they have, like one of the things that they asked us to include in this was looking at some additional parameters beyond PFAS landfill parameters. And so that is included here. But something like that, sometimes in the back and forth will get added in it. But I think we've already more or less accomplished that.
What would that be above and beyond the PFAS?
Spell that on the proposal. So it's stuff you're looking for like nitrates, metals.
It's, it's landfill, it's the typical suite of analysis that the state will look at with landfills.
Yes.
And they just wanted that to be there too, from the standpoint of being able to fingerprint it. Hey, it is from the landfill. No, it's not. You know, it's just a means for really making sure that the PFAS is the same and that, you know, any impacts are part of.
Since we talked back year to year, there's also been sampling done wells locked down by probably about a mile or and that was because there had been sewage sludge spread over some fields. And so a different consulting organization had worked with the DEP on that. And it had gotten samples. We've not heard that there was anything found, anything of note of PFAS in those tests. Just, so there's something else that's been done.
Yeah, if you, I highly recommend that you get a copy of that data because that'd be something that we could also look at on a fingerprint analysis because sometimes landfill cover soils will also mend it with sludge. And it's the same type of sludge. It'd be good to know. You know, the origin is the PFAS. I guess it's more data. I just kind of wanted to have that in there. So.
Okay. We, the town was really not involved. We found out that they had completed, basically because one of the wells they tested was at the town hall as well. So we knew they were active and talked to some of the residents as well, just to hear what they had heard. But the outfit working for the DEP on that one really hadn't worked through us. So we can, wait a second, I can try to see if I can get that report.
We could work our way into.
It's, I think Fessenden was
Okay, yeah.
The name of the organization that they were.
Okay. Thank you.
So this $13,145 budget would be all totally reimbursed by DEP. Because when I see numbers, it's like you have to go to the town because that's not in our budget. But I know we had seen this last year. That was before Lisa was with us. So I don't know whether we're ready to say yes and no for or if we want.
I look just, we look at it and I think, you know, I at least personally, I think you also, we looked at it last year.
Yep.
More or less, that was the only thing concerned was just whether we're, there was a cost we might have to incur.
Right.
But if that's not the case, I think we'd probably look at it and then we'll improve it next week to, to do that way.
Yeah. Is that all right with you?
Yeah.
As soon as we make that decision, we let.
My only concern, because I did read through it, my only concern was getting something, you know, on paper from the DEP saying, rather than saying, yeah, they'll cover us and then, you know, so that was right. You said that once we get the ball rolling, Bill.
The first step would be submitting it to the
So we need to put this on our agenda for Wednesday to have our, during our work group. So other, anybody have any comments, including Charlotte? Any comments or questions for these gentlemen or Mary Ellen?
Just so, we have Charlotte Boyden from Lincoln Avenue and Vito Wanda Bardi as well.
Okay, so I'm seeing you chat and
So I got your names. What's your name, sir?
Peter Drom.
Peter Drom, thank you.
Okay, Charlotte, anything to say? Just want to make sure. Okay, all right, Will and Mary Ellen, anything to add?
No, no, I think it's, we're just important to be moving forward with this and you guys did consider this and we are interested in making sure the property owners are feeling good about their order. I mean, we'll see how that all works out.
Yeah, I saw one of them last week and I, she had said she'd received some paperwork. And so I finally, yeah, I was wondering about it. So I finally asked her to bring it to me. She did. It was from Jeff a year ago.
Okay.
The summary part or something. It's like, okay.
We sent them a letter saying we wanted to do this.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so I told her we'd be talking about it tonight.
I think it's a good next step for the town on that property.
Yep, I think so too, especially that we just got the property a week or so ago. So it is now officially ours. Yep.
What the agent indicated at their register, they submitted the deed to the registry today. So the paperwork's almost all done.
Yep, yep. Thank you guys very much. You'll be hearing from us next week.
Okay, thanks for having us early in the meeting.
Although I don't know why you all want to stay here, right?
Thank you.
Just a little aside, I got some cookies back here in the back room, so please, please have at them. I made cookies for something yesterday and I forgot to bring them, so I need to get rid of them.
Okay, so we just need to make sure that we talk about that on Tuesday. All right, citizens issues. Any citizens issues here?
I have.
Okay.
I just want to double check what's going on with the
Mario, will you come sit up here so that Charlotte and Peter can hear you?
Sure.
This is Mario, I forgot.
Di Pietro.
Di Pietro, of course.
I just want to know if anything going on with my complaint about the garbage dump on Greenley.
You actually, that's one of the topics that we're going to be talking about shortly. We're going to be talking about putting together an ordinance committee and and that ordinance committee will be looking specifically at one of the items will be the junkyard. Because we have to have a policy that is very clear so that we can actually legally go to somebody and be able to
I did honor a few things that you know, when you there's certain things that like all these ancients where the oil is leaking out. That's a fact. That's not, you don't need any legal counsel to take care of that. I think look, the code enforcement officer, go and check and you see 15 old ancients laying on the ground having been emptied from oil. I think the 20 feet clearance for emergency vehicles, you don't need a new ordinance for that.
Yeah.
We just have to make sure that there's a 20 feet clearance for emergency vehicles. The other things, you know, it's a matter of interpretation. You know, all the garbage he has when he works at Bob's Industries Grill, they throw that stuff out. So it's basically garbage. Now, does it become personal property again and he takes it home? You know, that's debatable. So it's loud and clear that no garbage should be stored. Personal property is something that I acquire and I pay for if I just pick it up. So I think there's enough things there that we can get some movement. But by the time a new ordinance is written, it's going to be another two, three years.
No, that's our plan is not to do that, but I also, I hear you very clearly and we can certainly have another conversation sooner with code enforcement officer and talk to him about it and see if there's enough in that ordinance right now to move forward, even while they're looking at other ordinances. We can certainly talk to Gary to see what he has to say. Because he's the one that has to enforce it.
Oh, I understand. That's his job and that's why they pay it.
Right.
So that's why you send him there. He might not get anywhere and maybe you guys have to step in. But it's another thing and something to be done.
Yeah, yeah. In the past, I think he hasn't been as comfortable, which is why we've talked about revisiting that ordinance to be so clear that when he goes there, without a doubt, he can
No, I agree, but you know, everything is interpretation. If you stick to your interpretation, he doesn't have too much of a choice to do something about.
Yep. Any thoughts you two?
No, just understand, but not feeling very good about this.
Because we know it's an issue and, and you know, we clearly, that's part of why we're looking at ordinances because
No, I agree. That's going to take two, three years.
No, our goal, I actually, maybe we should go right into.
The Peters were waiting for two years. They flagged us two years ago.
Well, Tom Jacoby, who was involved with the old one, it told me it took him three years to to get it out and whenever it was done.
Well, our ordinance, we're planning to have the ordinance is done by the spring, but and we're going to come back to that because that's our next item on the agenda. So, so stay tuned.
But that's the difficult part because I'm looking at the papers that you
No, I know. It's always.
It's, it's easy to make rules, but enforcing the rules is the difficult.
That's correct. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. A new ordinance is great, but you have to be able to enforce it.
Right.
And you know, every paragraph is a matter of interpretation.
Ball one.
One from your side and one from my side. So it's just a matter of that something should happen. That's really my thing.
So part of the thinking and why having something like an ordinance process discussion about specifically this problem is that we establish standards that are clear.
No, I have no problem with that.
Yeah, so that's one of the concerns or major concern is that we have other properties on the island. If you look at the fine print of some of the state statute, also in violation. And so we're concerned about raising something and then having, it says not clear enough. We don't want to create problems for a number of other people on that one too.
No, I have no problem. I think what I'm saying we'd have to put a little bit of oil on this wheel so it
You're doing a good job of doing that. And we appreciate it. We really appreciate it because we know it needs to, we need to do something about it. And how do you do it without, as Jeff said, you know, all of a sudden you open up a can of worms. So we're trying to, you know, and I know Gary has been there and so I think until we're really clear on that interpretation and we all agree with that, then, then we can push something forward. So I think he feels that he needs something a little bit stronger.
It's easier to say. It's more difficult.
How do you write it even so that you're so very clear that there's no doubt in anybody's mind? So, and we're going to talk a little bit more about that ordinance committee in just a second. I just want to make sure that there aren't any other citizens issues before we move on. Yes, ma'am?
Just a minor one. So I don't know all that happened on August 27th when we had just a, you know, folk standing alone, they crowded the town hall. You know, a little bit about what happened, choosing the parking on the side of the road. I just want to mention that I'd like to be part of any further discussion with other community groups and stuff there about improving the policies around the use of, probably the town hall, maybe the church, you know, that's not a town building. I actually want to be able, I'm interested in minimizing situations going forward. Not that we can always predict the turnout at this event or that event, but if we can sort it out, I'm happy to participate, represent the district people for any further discussions that you guys have.
And I would say that April's been working on, on a policy related to that. So I'm sure she'd appreciate any conversation that you may have with her. We did have a conversation two weeks ago at our board meeting.
Yeah.
And and we did notify the individuals when we had a picnic a week ago.
Okay.
And we did notify them to let them know that if there, that, that something was going to happen and that we didn't know how many people might be there. And that if they chose, they could mark off that property so nobody would park there. So that's one step that we're taking to make sure that that doesn't happen.
And if we can work that out with April and the drafts that you have, that we can sort of just see how this would work across the board and sort of the different groups that use the building, including weddings and things like that.
That's
The community association, our groups.
Yep.
Anybody else?
Yep. It's great that you have a big group. We want to continue to have big groups, but we have to figure out how to manage that. Yeah, I loved it. I loved.
Well, I listened to that session. I think some people are a major pain in the arse. You know, for somebody driving on the corner of my property, making such a big deal out of it, it's ridiculous by all means. Waste a few time.
All right. Any other citizens issues? Okay. We're going to go then move to this issue around the ad hoc ordinance committee and we've had different pieces going on. I know April's working on some pieces. Jeff is working on some pieces. And I just want to quickly say the number of people that we're looking at on the committee. And I'm going to try to put that up.
Let me just circulate this around.
Yep. We have another copy, we have copies right there. I'm going to see if I can't share my screen. Of course, wait a minute, I have to get it up on the screen. That would be the first one. I can't share the screen unless there's something there, right?
I'll just introduce the documents. So it's two parts that we're talking about tonight with the ordinance review committee, one of which is membership. So we're ready to finalize the appointment for that committee. But we have to have like a chart, what's this committee due to be asked to work on? We've left it somewhat open-ended in the sense that the people can come and propose other needs. But we're wanting to make sure that some key priorities were covered in the ordinance review committee. So what just handed out in the room and what Donna is working to
It is his on.
Okay, on Zoom is a listing of ordinances that we would target to be addressed, but actually make sure the bottom part, so start with the bottom box. So on the bottom is topics for action. The biggest, most significant driver is the LD 2003. So that's where the state has mandated that we update our ordinances, our land use ordinances relating to the ability for landowners to have accessory dwelling in it, when in some cases multiple units on a lot. So this is something we have to do. We have to have it done by, I think, next July. So it's been on the planning board's docket. They've been working on, we're hoping to get some support from the regional planning commission who's interfacing with the state to get some, some planning board assistance. That was actually supposed to be part of the legislation was providing technical assistance to planning boards to do this. So what the, so that's one of the key priorities. Another key priority is the changes for code enforcement fees. So as we looked at our building code and our ordinances, just the role of code enforcement, the powers of code enforcement and maybe the steps of code enforcement. So one of the things that came, came out as a, as a weakness is that we don't inspect after, you know, we do a building permit, but, but we generally rely on the permitting to actually follow through and do what they said they were going to do. We could decide to add a step, probably add a fee for that, which would be inspection after it's done or before you finalize, get the code enforcement officer in to look at it. That's what most communities do. As a smaller community, we've had more leeway, but that's, that's why another drive is to look at the rule for code enforcement. And again, looking at the fee schedule to support that. And again, looking at the at the fee schedule to support that. Third is the business registrations and permitting, we have an ordinance, a site plan review ordinance, which amongst other things covers things like. A commercial activity, business activity, and if you have a business, you're supposed to be registering and filing for a permit under the site plan review ordinance. We have very few that have done so, the last one that did so, there was Lulu's Bar. Sassamo Brewing has done it and businesses in the past have done it, but recent history, no one has done that. The the part of the key is is we have, we're primarily residential community, we say that in our comprehensive plan, we're primarily residential. But we want people to be able to have a business, we want people particularly to be able to have home occupations, so they can work from home and have a business from home. And 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 support themselves, and so there's a permitting process for that, the concern is just that we don't have businesses that come in, they create a traffic issue. We don't want to have accidents by having too much traffic on the main road, we also don't want businesses that would produce hazardous leaks. Or create disturbances for the neighbors and the actual the ordinance covers those criteria. So one of the points is just to look at how we can make it easier to do that, make it easier for people to apply. And 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 basically get everybody kosher. Fourth item is the is the junkyard potential house concerns, so again, this is where people have, they're using their property in a way that looks like it's detrimental. To health and safety, and and this is what was been talked about from Mr. Petro. And the the last is the road maintenance guidelines, basically having a road ordinance, the road committee would take the lead on that. This will give them a guidelines for how they would manage and make decisions with regard to the maintenance of our roads.
Public roads?
Uh, our public roads, but we'll also discuss that with regard to private roads in terms of signage. But that's partially what the the committee wants to to address is is to is to talk about it, but then they can they can come up with what they think is. A good standards for the road ordinance and bring it through this re- this ordinance review committee. To incorporate in a in a package, ultimately, we 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 want to have this all addressed so that we have a a package. Of ordinance changes, in some cases, new ordinances for per town meetings. Which means we'd be looking to have them basically draft or something that could be after public public hearings come kind of March timeframe.
Yep, yeah. So and we have been going out looking for people and a variety of people from different sources, not all the ordinance committees. And right now, we have on our list that have agreed to support us and work with us are Bob Mooney, John Henderson, Ralph Jacobs, Jim Cromwell. In case, unless you're working on your own, Davies Allen, Brett Rainey, Chris Mayette says he'll test it out. Donna Gregory also says she'll she'll look at it, I encourage her to sort of listen to what was gonna go on tonight. Joe Dickatanen, Ron Studley. And I'm hoping that Joan Bradford will be interested, I just had a conversation with her this afternoon, so. It looks like about twelve people that will be a variety of people on the committee, so.
We we tried, and we asked for volunteers, we also in some cases want to make sure we have some representation. So we're having the representation from the planning board, the planning board will need to be working on this on the side, but there's someone representing the planning board for the committee. We have someone representing the emergency management area, Joe Dickatanen, so that's reflected. We have a couple of attorneys on the committee and we need to have the code enforcement officer. So we tried to have, and we had just regular people as well, but wanted to have a committee that had the knowledge. To bring forward issues and and hopefully also do a good job of grabbing.
And the two gentlemen in the back, I I haven't ever, I know there are three gentlemen back there, but the two gentlemen to.
No.
Yeah, we already picked on you, Jim, you have volunteered, but and I haven't asked you, but just let us know if you're interested. You've been coming to every meeting and you definitely have some, I bet some voice.
I'm curious, I'm curious.
Okay, there you go. So Adam, we figure out our first meeting, we'll let you know when it is.
Let me know.
Okay, that sounds good.
Who's who's the youngest person on that committee, I'm curious.
Uh, probably you, I know, I think it'll be Brent.
Yeah, I'm just curious if we got any younger representatives.
That's, we're desperate for young representation, so I I think it's Brent.
I think it's Brent, yeah.
Yeah, we haven't asked ages, we're we're not into checking.
No, I, you're not, I'm just curious if there's anybody under fifty.
I I think everybody we mentioned is under fifty, come on. And so are all of us, so come on, come on, Adam. All right, so I think the next step is really setting up a date to get this started and inviting all these people. So April, I think I I gave you a list, but this is a little bit of an updated list.
Yeah.
Okay, so you updated the since this.
Yeah, I just got a couple more, like I said, I just talked to Joan today and I heard back after I sent the note.
Why don't you keep this and we'll go over it together, because I think it's also.
Okay. They're saying that it's not, it's not, I I don't think it's a meet, a committee that has to meet, you know, quite frequently. Which probably will will meet and then sort of break out the different aspects of it and people go and do research and then come back together and bring stuff back to the table, so.
That's what I was telling people that.
That's kind of how I envisioned it working also, yeah.
Yeah, and that it was a very crunched timeline, that by spring, they needed to have something, so that was the biggest question people ask, is what's the time for that? So I tried to. Tried my best to convince people, but be honest, as honest as I knew, you know, we we haven't met with a committee yet, so we don't know, so. But any questions out there for any of you, Charlotte, any questions for about this? I'm gonna go back to stop share. All right, anybody out here, no, I know we asked Mary Ellen, I won't say what she had to say. Okay.
Thank you, but I'll.
I think again, the that initial meeting is organizational, we try to establish the parameters.
Yep.
One of the things that I think also a little more to talk to is just our role in terms of. How we have a kind of select board link to the committee without having a lot of select board presence.
Yeah, I know Lisa offered to be on that committee as as the representative, which, you know, we have at least one representative, but we don't need more than one person. If you just come back and tell us what more is going on. Anyway, all right, next on the agenda is roads.
So the road is done, other than.
What road?
Down here, ditching down here.
Down here is.
Other than the hay, the hay got washed Saturday night, so I gotta clean that up. So the road's drenched and believe it or not, we struck some ledge, I'd believe on what we're. We changed the color by day, lenses, we lowered that probably a foot and a half, so. That should we be a standing water, mostly standing water, we're going to do the other one tomorrow, weather pending. And that's about all I have to offer at this point, I'm waiting for an order of signs from White Sign. And they do, this ledge is gonna be an issue to be addressed next year, for sure. Everywhere I go, there's rock.
Welcome to Westport Island.
That's right.
All right, the the signs that you ordered, are they for.
Sorry, I heard you say they didn't come in this morning.
They did?
They did, yeah.
All right.
Not an intro.
Okay, but you have numbers for me before, I I skipped that part.
Yes, I can type the number, I just don't have the check present.
Last week, all right, correspondence, so there's one item of correspondence that I wanted to talk to the board about, and that was. On the Mid Coast Municipal Association, are you familiar with that at all, Mary Ellen? You are, so you want to talk about that and whether we should apply?
Sure. We should, I tried actually being part of it last year and. I'm not sure what happened, I didn't, I I got invited to one, maybe I maybe I upset people. But but what this what this is, it's primarily town managers or town administrators and some select board members. From towns in Knox, Lincoln Counties, I don't mostly go up into Waldo County, but it's a good.
Knox, Lincoln and Waldo County, yes.
So it's a good forum for discussion of common common problems, common issues, so for example, when. We had a a vacancy in the road commissioner position, this is one of the places where I got some some advice. On how to how to address that, this is also possibly where as we're looking at doing our revaluation of what what's involved. This would be a body that could give us good advice, so that's, look at this kind of a, you know, peers that we'd be part of.
So do they have a a regular meeting?
They they were meeting like once a month in different places.
Well, membership is twenty five dollars a year. So it sounds like it's a reasonable amount that we could probably afford, do we have, or we haven't done this in the past?
He said he has.
We have done this in the past, yeah, it just, for a reason, I stopped getting emails.
Was this the one that George was going to?
That's right, yeah, yeah, so initially I got it because it was still going to George in the select board email, so oh, great, I want to do this.
I didn't realize it had a formal name, so sorry about that, but yes.
Yeah, it's the first time I've ever heard of it, yeah, it just came through today.
Well, it's, the the paper is makes it more formal than it is today.
Okay, so based on your experience, I'd like to make a motion that we join this Mid Coast Municipal Association for. Twenty five dollars for the year.
I would second that.
All in favor, all right, all right, I'm gonna put this in here right now, April, okay.
And what you might do is, is here, you might want to be the one.
Yep, yep.
Do you want to do that?
Yep. Okay, any other correspondence that either of you two have had, no, okay, Ed, you have an admin item?
Well, yeah, it's, well, it's admin, it it it, maybe we should move into the to the the animal.
Okay, we're going next then to admin and first thing I want to say, because I've had several questions asked, tax bills did go out. All right, but they didn't go out until Friday, so people have been saying, I don't have my tax bills, like, no, you don't. Unless you came in here early and picked it up, you didn't get it, so they did go out this week, so we will be having them Friday by the end of the week. So that's just a question that keeps coming up and I.
People were getting it today. They were they were being delivered today.
Oh, were they, okay, so I'm gonna start going down the list and the first item on the list is next month's select board meeting schedule, April?
Just gonna get that set, so for the Lincoln County news, and we had talked about this, but I just wanted to revisit it and make sure. We're still on board, I think we had talked about not meeting perhaps on.
Indigenous Peoples' Day?
Yes, exactly. I'm viewing my whole calendar on the saving screen.
Last week.
There's a, there's five Mondays in October, so Monday the second, you're meeting. Monday the ninth, you're not, and we're not rescheduling. Monday the sixteenth, Monday the twenty third, Monday the thirtieth, all sound good?
Yep.
Okay.
And for its worth, I'd say we continue on to the sixth of November, the thirteenth of November, and then.
Forever?
Then it's debatable in terms of the twentieth, the week of Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving, yep.
Isn't the thirteenth, oh, Patrick's Day.
Is that Valentine's Day?
Valentine's Day is celebrated on that Friday, actually.
I think normally it's on that Friday.
Yeah, according to this calendar.
It's Saturday, November eleventh.
So I would suggest if we could just get get it done and do the first Monday except for Indigenous Peoples' Day. Through the the thirteenth of November.
Yeah, and then we can revisit, and then we're still having our Wednesday workshop days where we can talk legally. And that's been from three to six, that also gives us a chance to talk to the staff and get any issues aired with that, so it's a combination staff meeting. Select board workshop, and people are invited to that, it's just not a taped meeting. Before we go to the next item, just to get this off my plate, because I don't want to forget, is that we need to get to warrants, and I now have all the warrant information. Because we have two weeks with the warrants, so I'd like to make a motion that we approve warrant payroll number twenty four. For one thousand seven hundred seventy one dollars and fifty four cents, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Wow.
All right, okay, I'd like to make a motion that we approve accounts payable number twenty five for seventeen thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars and thirty cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, for this week's payroll, payroll number twenty six, I'd like to make a motion that we approve payroll for two thousand six hundred eighty nine dollars. And fourteen cents, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
And accounts payable number twenty seven for six thousand four hundred fifty four dollars and ninety eight cents, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
And just to make a note, I don't have the exact numbers here, but as of September first, the the staff do. Were able to opt in for both benefits, so September was the first time that that took took place. So you saw a little change in the payroll, all right, back to admin items, we had. A committee, another, I just had it, I keep moving things around and along the whole, I lose it. Couple of weeks ago, we approved the appointment of a Board of Appeals alternate, we needed still one more and so we'd like to, I'd like to make a motion that we. Approve the appointment of Nicholas Pagan as Board of Select, Board of Appeals alternate, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, and that Board of Appeals is now full, it's been empty for a good while and they've needed some kind of support there. All right, next on the agenda on admin items. Is it update on plans for other policies, just maybe update April on what you've been working on with some of the policies?
Oh, God, so many things, so. I set about trying to gather together all of our current policies and try to figure out what's in effect and what isn't. And it's a little bit of a patchwork that's been put together over years and years, so I'm trying to make some more. Comprehensive policies that fill in all the old ones and update it, there's lots of lead stuff in there so that we have new policies. I've been focusing on a committee's policy because I haven't been getting minutes from committees, I don't know who the officers are. And I know that I'm supposed to get that stuff and there is an old policy and some. Information about that, that's not very comprehensive or clear, like, when does that happen, how does that happen? So I'm trying to make a nice scheme from these policies that makes it really clear when committees should elect those people and they should report them. Who's submitted to a copy, so I can really go to committees and say, here's how you can do all this stuff. This is important, we're supposed to be saving forty minutes for like history, every minute of every committee for a billion of time, it's supposed to be saved. So that's what I'm really focused on, we needed to come up with a procurement policy in order to have FEMA funds, but. Having a procurement policy is probably a good idea, that would formalize our bid process, we do follow a certain set of steps, but we don't have a policy about it. So that will make it really clear to everybody and also how people can spend money when they need treasurer approval, that kind of thing. So a lot of towns do this, I looked at a bunch of different policies and sort of melded them, and I have a draft which we're gonna sort of go through. What else?
Well, I was just looking for the the committee that you've been working on now.
Town Hall. Yep, I was trying to make sense of like a town hall policy, how we do town hall, because a lot came up about the town hall rental form, well, what is that lying on, is there a policy? So there there are, there's sort of a collection of very old documents that, a lot of which don't really apply anymore, so we really need to sort of have an updated. Policy about how our, not not just the town hall, maybe even more broadly, how our town properties are treated and responsible for what and. how our town properties are treated and responsible for what, and so anyways, I feel like I opened a giant can of worms, 'cause I was like, I'll just break this out last week, and now I'm like, oh my God, it's gonna be a lot home. But, um, it's interesting, it's fun, I think it'll be really good for the town to have some clarity on those things, so.
But we talked about the difference between policy and, uh, and ordinance, 'cause there is an ordinance committee, the policy or policies that we make here, they can be changed pretty readily, um, that just help get some of that detail, where the ordinance is more of a, uh,
A law.
More of a law kind of thing, uh, and have to be changed and approved with the town meeting. So, policies are things that pretty much work for us internally, um, but that need to be working, um, you know, make sure that we function as an organization. So, do you wanna postpone looking at that, um, until you can get it posted on the web?
Yeah, I don't think we're ready, it's still just very much a draft, I'll get your input and get it.
Yep, yep, that's perfect.
Better for one.
Perfect. Alright, um, you had something on admin items, Jeff?
Yep, um, so we have the, um, main municipal association convention, part of that's the business meeting, uh, and so the town, uh, has a designated representative or voting member, uh, for that business meeting. Um, and I'd like to be identified as that voting member for the business meeting. Um, and I believe that meeting is, is the Wednesday, uh, Wednesday before for the girls.
It's coming up, we get a million emails, I've been ignoring it because, should I, am I supposed to go?
It, it's a, it's a good, it, it, it costs money, so, uh, being a big tech, saying maybe not everybody wants to go. Uh, but if you see something amongst the agendas that, that you, you, you think would be important, maybe, it's kinda like training, it's an opportunity to go to sessions, um, last year, there were, there were some actual sessions on the L D two thousand and three, there was a session on the Senior Tax Stabilization Program, uh, there are other sessions on roads and road management. So, I, I personally find it very, very okay, um, but, um, when I've been, I've also paid my own way. So it hasn't cost a town or anything.
So if April wanted to go as a, uh, as a town clerk, she could also go and you would only have.
Yeah, and to be clear, I'm not dying to.
Yep.
But something should be here.
Yep. I know you want one more thing to add to your list.
Yeah, I, trains are nice, but.
Well, I'm fine with you, uh, calling as being a voting member. Are you okay with that?
Oh, sure.
Okay, do we need a?
Yeah, actually, I think we're good to have it sold out.
Okay.
For the board.
Alright, then, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, have Jeff be the voting member at this year's MMA convention on Wednesday, October fourth, do I have a second?
A second?
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
And we'll, have you upstairs?
Hmm.
Okay, so two to zero. Alright, um, any other admin items?
Nothing from you?
Alright, so other legal business and, um.
Peter just stepped in the room. But are you still here?
Oh, yeah. This is fresh one of those.
Yeah, um.
Oh, no, no, no.
Just to, to give a little update, uh, well, a month ago, two months ago, however long ago it was, um, we had Peter Drum and Vito Longobardi here over, um, an issue with the Board of Appeals who had, um, said they had not approved the variance that you were looking for. And, and then, um, we tried to have some back and forth, and we just didn't quite connect it. So, last week, uh, Peter and I were able to connect again, and he offered a, a proposal, and I did mention it to, uh, the rest of the board and, um, and, and to, to keep us, uh, transparent. Um, what Peter has suggested, because we wanted to make sure that, um, this isn't something where, um, it looks like, you know, wow, we, we, we just get our hands slapped and anybody could do it, you know, we could, we could do something where we're not following what the, what the, uh, plan was, and we could now, uh, just pay a small fine, and I'd be happy with that. We don't want that happening. And we're also trying to support the Board of Appeals who went through a long extended process to, to make their decision. Um, so, um, on Friday, um, Peter Drum for, uh, Vito Longobardi, um, offered twenty-five hundred dollars as a, um, as a fine to, um, to, to sort of remedy or, um, fix the, the violation. So, um, we, we talked at six, and, um, we decided that we wanted to have a meeting, we didn't know you were coming, but it's great to get here, and Vito is also here, I'm on line here, so, um, I'll, I'll shut up. And, uh, somebody on the board, or Peter, if you have something you wanna say, I don't know how, you wanna start this, but since you're here, would you like to share your thoughts?
Well, well, I, I basically, um, you know, I, I went to the statute that deals with this, which is, um, forty-four fifty-two, and, you know, the, the penalties, you know, range from a hundred to twenty-five hundred for kind of a first offense. And, you know, I, I understand what you're saying in terms of, um, wanting to have a, a, you know, a substantial, uh, reason to, you know, check and double check, uh, under the ordinance. And so, you know, my, my point is to, you know, although I still think it's more on the hundred side than on the twenty-five hundred dollar side, uh, the Longobardis said, look, you know, we understand, we, you know, they, they actually also, they clear again that the only reason they went for a variance was 'cause that was the advice they got. You know, they, they never contested the idea that, you know, that this was a, a problem, and they self-reported. Uh, so I think, you know, when the court, if a court were to look at this, you know, let's say we didn't settle it, what a court is gonna do is, they're gonna look at a, a range of factors and try to determine what the right penalty is. So we can go spend a bunch of money, and I think you, on your best day, you get to twenty-five hundred. Um, and, uh, I don't think a court is gonna force the, the movement of the garage, because there are three factors they look at. One is substantial environmental damage, they're on the shoreline zone, um, it could cause erosion. Another issue is, um, that i- if it works as substantial injustice, the court will not look at that. So I think, you know, when, when we look at it, you know, you got a forty-foot setback, you still have about thirty-seven feet of setback. I think a court's gonna give you, on your best day, twenty-five hundred. So I got Vito and Melissa to agree that, let's go ahead and offer that in good faith of the town and see what they say.
That term substantial injustice, how, how do you define that? I mean, I'm not saying it's your, your term, but I.
Sure.
I've read it, and I just am curious.
Yeah, so, I mean, in terms of the way that case law kind of breaks down this, they look at the relative harm versus the impact of correctional harm. Now, um, I've argued both sides of this issue. I have one case, for example, where, uh, a building was, uh, installed fourteen feet from the lake, from a lake, and we've got a couple of different problems, one of which is that, the, the way that the building is designed is causing the erosion of the shore into the lake. So you balance moving the thing, you know, as an environmental problem versus leaving it where it is. Um, but the injustice question there is, did the violator know what they were doing? You know, versus, um, you know, what, what kind of benefit they were trying to get? And a court will say, look, it's not an injustice to make someone who knew they were not supposed to locate a building fourteen feet from the water, when you're supposed to be seventy-five feet back from the water, to make them move it, even if it costs a hundred thousand dollars. In this case, you know, the Longobardis self-reported, which is a big factor. Both courts are gonna look at that and say, these people weren't trying to get away with this, they, you know, when they found out about it, when they got a, uh, the first mortgage sketch after their, their project, they, like, almost immediately declared it to the C E O. They said, hey, look, we got a problem. So, it, you know, to actually move that garage, I didn't, I didn't get quotes, but I'm telling you, just in other cases I've done, you know, fifty to a hundred thousand dollars is not crazy, 'cause you gotta literally lift up the garage off the foundation, demolish the foundation, save whatever parts you might be able to, you know, you might be able to save some of the walls, and then put in a new wall, tear all that out, fill it, I mean, you got a lot of work to do, okay? And I, I just don't think a court is gonna say, you know, for another three feet of setback from a road, which is not a sensitive environment, they're just not gonna do that to a, an honest violator who, again, self-reported. So, I think that's, you know, when I, when I think of, uh, I don't think we're in a gray area, I don't think we're like in a, they were seventy-two feet from the water instead of seventy-five, I don't think we're in that kind of area, I think we're in the, like, who cares, I mean, the worst that's gonna happen is a snowplow is gonna hit their garage with, you know, rocks once in a while, well, that's their problem. You don't, you don't get any, uh, you don't get any damages from the town for rocks from a snowplow. So, you know, and I still think thirty-seven feet of throw is probably not. Um, so that's, you know, that's why I can, in terms of trying to handicap the liability to the Longobardis, yeah.
Jeff, can I?
Yes, I can recap, uh, as we looked at some of the same ground that you covered, uh,
Yeah.
that, uh, again, looking at the, at the statute, the maximum penalty to give me a sentence is five thousand dollars. So it was the maximum.
That might be true.
And that's subsection, uh, forty-four fifty-two, paragraph three.
Yeah, right, specific violations, right?
Yeah, so, so for, for this violation. Um, and I think we also agree, we don't wanna encourage or court costs.
Yep.
No, to do that. So, I, I think we've been in, in general agreement that this is not a, a substantial. Again, our concern has been, um, how to get a resolution that seems, um, fair to the intent of, of our ordinance and, and, um, and our, and our processes, um.
And that goes back to why we're working on ordinances, because we need to be really clear, not just to be writing so clearly that, um, you know, and that maybe the next time, we won't even have this issue, because somebody can come and look at it ahead of time. Also reinforcing, enforcing those ordinances, and, um, so that it isn't a matter of getting more of the things.
What are the benefits of going through the, where it feels processed, was it establishing facts, um, for us? Um, and some of the facts just what, what, how did the violation come about? And also, who was responsible, we just don't have the bodies come about. And, and some of the facts was that, well, the building was started later, after the, the building permits, in the spring, there was, uh, a, a, a planned, and then revised plan after the code enforcement officer stepped in and said, no, you're, you're too close, you need to move back. Uh, our, our process doesn't do today is, is really do that inspection after the fact, or before you finalize the footings, um, to get the code enforcement officer, say, you're in the right place.
Yeah.
The code enforcement officer had divided his plan, that's the extent of, of, of his, his involvement, uh, until the, until later. Uh, and, and by the time it got done, he, he was off his plate.
Yeah, sure, sure.
So, so it helped us see that we have, maybe we, we need to be more mindful of that implementation, not relying on the building permit, and people following the building permit, but they actually maybe add an inspection step.
Yeah.
Uh, so, in some ways, this has been helpful, in, in the way in which you, you learn from your mistakes.
Sure.
Uh, but I think that's partially how we, we've, we've learned, and we're now incorporating this in our process. And I'm saying it's partially so that, uh, people hear what the, what the board's thinking. Um, we're trying to be mindful of protecting our ordinances, even though we have some work to do to make our ordinances more effective. So that's my opinion.
So, um, we can either talk about this some more once you, or we can go with, um, Peter's, um, suggestion and have him write, um, but is it a letter of consent?
Yeah, consent agreement, you record of the registry base.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I would move that we proceed, again, subject to the review of the, of the consent agreement letter.
Sure.
But the, in the, the principles of, uh, of a twenty-five hundred dollar fine, um, acknowledgement that there was a violation, that this resolves that, that violation, 'cause that's part of what we're supposed to resolve violations. Uh, so reaching agreement would, would do so, meets the needs of the, uh, the Longobardis, um, for, for the future for their property. It hopefully helps us, puts, puts the issue to bed, uh, but we're using this against, to help us go forward.
Yeah, and before you make that motion, I actually wanna ask, Vito, um, I don't see you, but I see your name. Um, so do you have any, um, and I see you're off mute, you have any comments?
Um, yeah, hello, everybody, um, I'm up here in Fort Kent, so if the signal is bad, just, uh, let me know. But, um, a couple of things, which Peter had already mentioned, and you guys already know too. Number one, we brought this to the board. I got a building permit, I tried my best to, to do this, and I, I get the sense that maybe some of you on the board, I might be wrong, this is just a gut feeling, felt that I did this intentionally because I wanted to get a little bit closer to the road, which I would have to be a harebrained idiot, number one, to self-report myself, and to, to move closer to the road and not closer to the water, it makes no sense whatsoever. So my point is, I just wanna qu- quash that, if anybody's thinking that, this was not intentional. This was not intentional. Yeah, Gary, and, and I don't know if you've had a chance to speak to Gary, but Gary was supportive of, 'cause I came to him and I told him, and we were very frank and, are very upfront with him, and he, he was sympathetic to me, you know? Yes, it's a violation, I understand that, and, but, you know, I, I don't wanna feel like I've been hung out to dry here, because I, I think, yes, the Board of Appeals was, was Ralph and everybody on the board, nobody really knew what was going on and how to approach things and do things. So I think from that perspective, I think the Board of Appeals learned a lot, including Ralph. So, I just ask you to, to realize that, number one, I didn't do this on purpose, 'cause that's, that would be idiotic. Number one, number two is, you know, I, I, I just, I just wanna let you know that, you know, I, I'd love to, to rectify this and settle this, but, um, you know, I, I, I just, you just wanna be clear about that, so, that's basically.
Yeah, thanks, we all wanna bring closure to this.
Thank you.
And, and, and learn from it.
Yes.
And, uh, it certainly has been a learning experience, I'm sure it has been for the Board of Appeals as well, 'cause I know they went through quite lengthy process for this, so, um, thank you for your comments. So now, go back to, did you have anything to add, Peter, before?
No, it sounds good, I'm happy to get you a draft for your next meeting.
Okay, well, Jeff, uh, I will second your, um, your motion, um, to accept Peter's suggestion. Um, do I have, uh, let's take a vote, uh, all in favor?
One.
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, so we'll wait to hear back from you, and, um, thank you, Vito.
Thank you.
We'll bring.
Thank you, I appreciate them.
And safe travels up there in Fort Kent, it's quite a hike.
You gotta watch out for the moose, you know?
Hey, yes, yes, the deer down here, the moose up there.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yep, take care. Uh, any other business from anybody here?
I'm listening, one other thing.
Okay.
So you were talking about, um, unlicensed junkyards.
I saw you just sent a.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
You have enough right there.
Yeah, go ahead and say what you wanted to say, I saw you send.
Oh, no, yeah, no, the, the statute actually controls all of it, um, and so you already have enough for an eighty K action, land use enforcement on the, on the land, just what the statute is saying. Yeah, I, I've done that in probably like fifteen courthouses.
Great, thank you, thank you very much. Yeah, that's great, and I will make sure that gets forwarded to you if you didn't, okay? Um, so if there is nothing else, then I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn tonight. Do I have a second? Second, all in favor?
Alright.
Okay.
So, uh, take a cookie.
Charlotte?
Take a cookie.
Anything I need, no, Charlotte, I already got off of here, okay?